Okay, I believe it's nine o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the governing board regular meeting Thursday, February 24th, 2022. And in lecture hall, I'd like to have us rise and say the pledge of allegiance if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'd like to make a little remark about the beautiful quilts that are behind us. As you know, the Pallaverty Patches are having their display in Palm Ridge for the weekend. And we are the lucky recipients of two beautiful quilts to hang in our area. These particular quilts were made by Nancy Steely of the Pallaverty Patches. And we'll be rotating quilts throughout the lecture hall about every two months. Every one or two months, we'll have a new set that will be out. So that's something to look forward to. I like the color. Okay, the first item on business is to have the approval of the minutes from January 27th, which was our last regular board meeting. Do I have any changes from the directors that, from the minutes that were posted? Okay, the minutes will stand approved as written. Then I'd like to also welcome the torch class. Torch class started last week, and we have a number of the torch participants here today. Why don't you stand up and give a wave? All right. Welcome. We're very much, we're happy to have you. And we'll try to do a little bit of explanation as we go through our meeting today so that you can understand kind of what's going on as a learning experience. This is our regular meeting, and that's the time that we do our voting. At our workshop earlier in the month, we do a lot of discussing and talking about things, but we do not vote. At this meeting, we also can do discussion as well on particular topics. And we will have one of those that we go on and have a conversation about later on in the, in the meeting. Okay, the next section has our EOMs. And these are end of the month reports from each of the different committees. And on your agenda, you can see that there are several committees that did not meet. So we don't have reports on this particular, on those particular committees. Typically, we just do a consensus kind of situation here, and we don't read all of those. But they are available for you to read if you should like to know what happened at each of those different committees. So I believe that, Roberta, we have a motion?
I move to accept the February 2022 end of month reports as filed information.
Second.
Thank you, Ann. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes and the EOMs will be filed. Each month, we try to focus on one of those committee reports and have a little bit of a presentation on what's going on with that particular committee. So this time, I'd like to have Marshall Adams, our chairperson of the Elections Committee, come to the podium up here and tell us in detail a little bit of what's happening with his committee, because this is a pretty timely event that's coming up in this next month. Marshall?
Good morning. The Elections Committee has been meeting since September on a regular basis. We have had 13 candidate packets picked up. And when we presented orientation, after all, after those were verified, there were seven verified with signatures. We had orientation. Three committee members presented roles and responsibilities one morning. We had two turn those back in, so we have five people running for the board. Our committee's been developing questions for the forum on March 2nd, next Tuesday, and for the meet and greet on March 16th in the lecture hall. We did have Katie and Karen help us with videos for each candidate, and they've been on the website. We also developed a website where you could send, where residents could send in questions. We got a pretty good response with that. We had like 26, 27 people submit questions. So we'll, we'll enter those questions with our questions. And that's a lot, lot better response than I thought we would get. We've been very careful keeping the, keeping the questions secret. We don't, we didn't even put them on, we don't even email them. We just, we just keep them real quiet in our little packets at home. We have way too many questions, of course, for the forum, but we'll try to cover as many of those as we can and try to put those within interest areas. We have one subcommittee working on the forum, and we have one working on the meet and greet. We've also been working with Karen and Katie on the online voting for Monday, March 1st through March 24th. That ends at three o'clock on March 24th and starts on Monday. I think we're prepared to handle the election day, March 28th, from 10:00 to 3:00. And the announcement for the election process will be at 3:30. We've tried to be as transparent as we can, with the exception of the, the questions. I'd like to introduce the people that are running. I think they're all here. And just stand and smile at everybody, you guys. Okay, okay, Tim Hurley. Tim played golf yesterday. Harry Stanabine. George Kubodick. Jack Leary. And Dick Rhodes, where was he? I saw him earlier. Okay? Thank you, folks, for committing your lives to Sun City West. Been on a lot of boards and it's a challenge. So do I have any questions at all? March 2nd is for the forum. And that's here. And what'll happen there is people will give their five-minute presentations, and then questions will be asked. We'll, we'll give people cards at the door to see if they have questions. They can write them on the cards. We'll try to compile them and put them with, with our questions. We'll do a situation where we, everybody won't be asked the same question. That gets kind of redundant, so. And that's the, the other one is March 16th, and I forget what day that is.
Wednesday.
Okay, and that's an evening situation. And that'll be at the social hall.
6:30 to 8:00.
6:30 to 8:00. Thanks, Karen. Any questions? Thank you for the opportunity to, for me to get to go through this. So we'll, we'll get her done. Yeah. Nine o'clock to 11:00. Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks. Thank you, Marshall. The Elections Committee chairperson cannot be a member of the board. And Marshall has done a great job working with his committee. And some years, they put in a lot of work. And then there aren't enough candidates to go through this process. So every other year, it seems there's a little frustration with being able to take it all the way to conclusion. So this year, it's great that we have five candidates, and his committee's doing an excellent job. Roberta?
It's gonna be broadcast online, too, right?
Yes. The, the forum will be online. The 16th is not, correct? Correct, because that's a social interaction, and there wouldn't be any way to be able to reproduce that. You'd have to have numerous, five different Youtubes to be able to do that. So yes, the first one will be online. Okay, down to the filings. And Ann, and you want to give us a little background for the, for the people that are, the torch people as to what this is?
Yes, I chair the Budget and Finance Committee. And as such, we review the financials of the Rec Centers of Sun City West every month. Those are also published in the Rec Center News each month. And you can see them, or you can find them online on the Sun City West website. We try to be very transparent about all of that. I can tell you that if you come to a Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we do review those fairly extensively. We, we ask a lot of questions. I think our CFO, Pete Finelli, and his team, Cliff Smart and Terry West, who come, always come prepared because they know that they're gonna get some tough questions. But when we accept those, we, we have to have consensus by the Budget and Finance Committee to accept those, and then they are filed, and then we bring them to the governing board to make that official, that they have been filed. So the November and December 2021 financials have been reviewed and accepted by the Budget and Finance Committee. They have been filed. And as a footnote, Sue, may I also add that we are currently, will be looking at the budget for next year. And that will be in the April Rec Center News. And there will be budget forums later in the month that you can attend and publicly ask questions. Thank you.
Okay, and this requires no vote. It's just a report on the filing. Okay, on to new business. We have a motion about the bylaws. And Tim, let's give us, give some background for the, for the torch people.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Basically, the change in the bylaw is to bring it up to date with the digital age. A lot of the bylaws were written several years ago before people were online and had things that they could look up online. The motion for bylaw 8.04 is just that, to bring it from paper copies into an online resource.
Okay. Want to read the motion?
Right. "After discussion and review by the governing board at its January 14th, 2021 workshop, and the mandated publication for 30 days, I move that the governing board approve the elimination of language at bylaw article 8.04, special provision slash section 8.4.4, clarifying that chartered clubs' RRNP's will be available only online at suncitywestclubs.com as redlined."
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Discussion? Board members, any questions? Any questions from the audience?
What's an RRNP?
Rules, regulations, and procedures that our clubs, our chartered clubs follow. Yes? You need to come up to the microphone. Sorry, I'll bring you a portable mic. The reason is that this is, because it's on YouTube, the people that are listening would not be able to hear you.
No problem. Thank you. My question is, the individual clubs also have RRNP's. And I'm serving right now as the webmaster for two different clubs. And they have to be brought in line with more recent decisions. Does the Rec Center do that? The recreation staff do that? Or do, does each individual club have to modify their charters and, or not their charters, their RRNP's and bylaws to conform to recent decisions regarding sales?
Okay, that's really not what this is addressing, but I'll answer your question anyway. The recreation manager staff will assist the clubs in bringing their bylaws up to date with the new RRNP's. So you will have support by, by the staff in order to accomplish that task. And your name? Rec card number? Thank you. Okay, any other questions on this before we vote? Okay, let's go around. Roberta?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes.
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 Okay, the, the motion passes, and the change will be made. In this particular vote, when you're changing a bylaw, we have to have seven out of nine of us have to vote in favor, just as an aside. Okay, on to the next item. This one deals with the RRNP's. And Donna, you can give us some background and, and then the motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This situation is regarding basically independent contractors for chartered clubs. And the recommendation is to include a guideline for a definition of independent contractor and specifically setting out the requirements for independent contractor. Needs to fill out an independent contractor form, a CR-8. And it is given recommendations for the form and situations that do not need an independent contractor's form. And I will read the motion. "I move that the governing board approve insertion of an independent contractor definition and engross revisions to the contract segment of the charter clubs' RRNP's as redlined."
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ann. Okay, discussion. Harry?
First of all, I have a question. Can we discuss what was, we talked about at our executive meeting? Since that has been already out to the general manager and the staff, and we were told not to bring anything out, but I've heard that there's stuff been brought out. So can I ask a question that, what was agreed upon in that meeting?
Is that in relation to item number 6.04?
Yes.
Why don't we wait until then and discuss?
Well, no, no, this, on this subject.
Oh, on this page?
Right.
Okay. So what is your, I, I think you can go ahead and ask a question.
Okay, thank you. Did we ever get the attorney's letter where on the bottom statement, Amy received donations directly from club members but not through the club?
Yes, I got that orally from the tax attorney the day after we discussed it. It was, it was a proof.
It was supposed to be a written statement.
We also sent this to Hazelwood. So I have to call on Bill, and, and James Hazelwood is here in the audience today. I, I know that I got verbal agreement from the initial tax attorney. And then I believe that we also sent this to, to James, and he approved a number of the things and made some suggestions on the page. Bill?
Yes, ma'am. If the question is, did we get anything in, in writing, Harry, from Mr. Noblesdorf? On that particular question? No. That was an executive meeting that I was not attending?
I know that.
Okay, so when, when that was brought to my attention, there was a phone conversation that was brought up. I believe Ms. Fitzsimons and Ms. Maloney were in the room when we were getting kind of relayed some information back regarding that meeting. A phone call was reached out to Mr. Noblesdorf. He responded to the questions that the president was responding to based on the executive session. And that was where that was, that was what, that was where that was left. The date offhand, I don't, I don't know.
The, the date that I spoke with him on the phone was the day after our meeting. It would have been February 1st. And I know that it was also sent to James Hazelwood. And he sent back some suggestions and approved that, that piece that was on here.
Hello, I'm James Hazelwood. I, I definitely saw red lines, you know, to these red line changes. I, and so what is your specific question?
When we had our executive meeting, the request was made about the last sentence, that it would be in writing. It would be in writing before the chartered clubs had their meeting to approve that change.
Okay.
It was agreed upon by the board that it would be in writing.
But that was gonna come from Noblesdorf. He's the, he's the tax attorney, so. Yeah, so, yeah, I mean.
My point is, is that what was directed by the board did not happen.
Okay, then, you know, perhaps then this isn't ready to be approved? Are you questioning whether they can pay members directly, or volunteers? Is that the, no?
Yeah, I think the question is whether or not that that has been approved, that it is okay to provide donations. And it's a technicality that Harry is concerned about, that we didn't get that in writing, even though I received that orally from Noblesdorf. And I also sent suggestions to James Hazelwood several days, I guess, later, and received approval, that, that was fine. You did not suggest any changes, so I don't know.
I don't see, I didn't see any problem with members getting donations, you know, directly. You know, that, you know, that's not, that's not, yeah. So I, I didn't see any problem with that, but I don't know what the conversation with John Noblesdorf was exactly, so.
Right, and his, well, we had asked if that was appropriate, and then I verified it with them the next day to make sure we had understood it correctly, and it was.
Yeah, it makes, makes sense to me, so.
Okay, so it's all right with you as well. Lisa?
Thank you, President Fitzsimons. I, I think that where Harry's going with this is that I can shed some light on what Harry was requesting that came out of the executive session. And after you and I had a conversation on February 11th, that yes, you had asked verbally of Noblesdorf, where we had originally requested in writing for it to be approved by Noblesdorf. Apparently, that never happened, so you got it verbally, and you said on the 1st, and you had turned around and did a summary and given it to Kathy. Well, when I was in on the 10th and I requested to see that document, Kathy didn't have anything in writing from you summarizing the conversation between you and Noblesdorf. So that's where the ball got dropped, and we were still back in the same boat. So then the email comes into play from Cliff on February 8th, from, going from Cliff to Noblesdorf, which relays a bunch of information from James Hazelwood's June 23rd email pertaining to this conversation. And that's where all this comes into play, which in turn was the February 10th, where Tim, myself, and Sharon were in looking at these legal documents. And Cliff asked, said that he verbally obtained the verbal okay from Noblesdorf, not you. And I said, oh, on what day did you get that? He said, oh, I got it on February 8th. So in theory, now we've, we've got a big cluster, because I said, oh, okay, thank you. And still no document, though, from either you or Cliff regarding the Noblesdorf approval of what the board asked for.
Okay. Go ahead, Tim.
Let me just shed a little light on what Lisa's comment was. Lisa, at, at a meeting on the 10th, you had left, and Kathy did find the, the email correspondence, which I did see, from Sue back to James. So it was there. She just didn't find it in time for you to be there.
Okay, I had sent a written request, and Noblesdorf didn't see it in the morning. We needed it by noon so that we could present it to the Chartered Clubs Committee, which is what prompted by telephone call to him to get the verbal agreement. So I guess at this point, we need to make a vote on, on this issue. And are there anybody, anybody from the community that wants to come up and talk? Please come up to the microphone.
He gave me a handheld, so if that's okay?
Yep.
My only question is, this seems to be a motion to insert a definition, not the definition. Is that correct? It's, the motion was to insert a definition, but I didn't hear the definition.
It is to insert the definition and engross revisions.
But we don't know what those are. We don't know what the definition.
Page 16. Can you put up the fresh copy, the clean copy?
I can't see that, so I'm old.
Yeah, put up the clean copy instead of reading this. Definition is at the top.
Could you read the definition, please?
Yes, I will read the definition. Independent contractor, a person paid for providing a specific service within identified time period, can realize either a profit or loss from service, has an investment in equipment or facilities, works for more than one entity, and offers services to the general public. And I'd like to share that this definition is a guideline per the IRS giving definition for the difference between an independent contractor and an employee. And this definition is guidelines for clubs to determine, is this really an independent contractor?
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
And the concern that Harry and Lisa are bringing up is really letter C3 at the bottom?
Yes, where it says, "Club member instructors who do not qualify as an independent contractor may not receive payment for services. These volunteer instructors may receive donations directly from club members but not through the club."
Excuse me, Lisa?
No, no, President Fitzsimons, I'm, we are on board that that is exactly what they should be receiving as.
Okay, so what is, then I'm totally missing the issue, other than you wanted it in writing.
Yeah, just that we never obtained the approval from Noblesdorf. And so that was where the, just, you know, that we were discussing. But the other, I don't have a problem with the added definitions. I don't have a problem with the added definitions. My problem is with the page 16, where what the, what came out of the chartered club approval on your February 1 meeting, what the chartered club committee approved to move forward, is not what we are looking at. There, there are 17 changes from what they gave consensus to move forward to what we are being asked to approve.
The concepts are the same. This was, this went to the Chartered Clubs Committee to approve the idea of the donation as an option for them, and that's what they approved?
And, and they did, but then that is not the only change that's being moved forward to the board. There's additional 17 changes in here, words, and I mean.
Okay, what happened is this was.
It doesn't match. It's, you know, it's, if you want to use the word. It doesn't match, it's, you know, it's, if you want to use the word wordsmithing.
It was put in better English and in paragraph form and in outline form, and that's the only thing that happened.
Then it should have gone back to chartered clubs for that approval.
Donna, did you send that back to your committee to approve?
No, it has not gone back to chartered.
No, 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 be it, be it email. I believe that we sent that back to them to see if it was okay.
The current, what you have in your clean document was not presented as a clean document to the charter clubs, but the information that is in there is unchanged. It is just reorganized, specifically setting forth, if you're going to have a CRA, independent contractor form, signed by an independent contractor, those items are separated from, if you do not require a CRA, independent contractor form, those requirements. It was just reorganized and reformatted. The information is the same.
And this was sent out to all of the board members to review and to make comment back to Donna. Did you make comment back to Donna about that concern?
Madam Chair, President.
Jim?
What worries, I think, what is being expressed is the same thing we've dealt with a couple of times in, with the board. You can't take minutes, we can't take what a committee has approved and rewrite it even for form or content. It has to be, this is what we approved at the committee level, that goes forward to the board. It's not, you can't wordsmith it after it gets into, out of the committee, because it's, why have a committee if we're not going to use a committee?
I would just.
Donna?
I would just like to share that this whole subject matter for independent contractor has prevented clubs from moving forward in knowing what direction they can go. And when we had the special meeting with the attorney, at that point, with the recommendation from the attorney, we moved forward without waiting months at a time to go back to the meeting to get charter club approval, when basically, the information is the same. Again, the concern was for clubs to be able to move forward.
Well, what I know about.
Jim, did you want to talk?
Yes, please, I would. Thank you. What I, what I know about committee work is, we have committees to do work. They present a process, they make, they do the wordsmithing in the committees, they send it forward to the board for approval. And that's not what's happening, and that bothers me very much, that we cannot do this at home and bring it back as if it gone through the committee. That's what I'm saying. Whether it's the same content and just rewritten into better English is not appropriate for what we're doing. We have people who, on committees, that write stuff just fine, and we don't need to be doing this stuff. This is not fair to committees, it's not fair to this board, it's not fair to the process of what we're trying to accomplish here.
I did bring this in writing and in email to Donna, concerned that it had not gone back to her committee, when I saw the revised edition.
Okay, thank you for the feedback, I missed that. Okay, Tim?
Donna, as, as much as I hate to do this, Jim's right. We've had committees rewrite stuff in the past, and it's led to serious consequences. And I just think we need to follow the, not only the letter, but the spirit of the law, that the committees review this before it gets to the board. Sorry, Donna.
Anybody from the audience? Come on up. Or else, is that portable mic? No, okay. Tip it down a little bit.
Lynn Kellis, 120129. This has gone on for four months, and the biggest issue started with this 20-point checklist, which if you follow up with the IRS, it's no longer used in figuring out whether you're a contractor or not. Another item I'd like to point out is that when we were looking at the definition back in the last meeting, you had most of the IRS definition in there without the words "probably." When I brought it to one of the board members, I was told that that was put in by someone else on the board, which is incorrect. That probably is in the IRS. And Harry, I'm sorry to call you out, but I understand you worked for the IRS 50-plus years ago. That's great, and you worked there for a couple of years, that's great. You have some knowledge. But a lot of people in this room are able to go in and look at documents and understand them. My feeling, my thoughts are, you guys are so worried about where you stand in this infighting of who's stronger, that you're not getting anything done. At this point, I put my hands up. Do what you're gonna do, but just pass something. It's been four months on this one item. Thank you.
Okay, I think I will call for the vote. You want to read the motion again, please? Donna?
Yes. I move that the governing board approve insertion of an independent contractor definition and engross revisions to the contract segment of the charter clubs' RMPs as redlined.
Okay, let's start with you, Donna?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Harry?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Roberta?
No.
Tim?
No.
Sharon?
No.
Jim?
No.
Okay, the motion does not pass. I guess at this point, we live with what we already have in the RMPs related to contracts. And that's, that, that's where we're at, unless this come back, comes back again.
I don't think that's what, that's not what you heard. What I'm, what this group, what I'm saying is that this needs to go back to the committee for approval. Bring it back in a month and we'll approve it, or call a special meeting and we'll approve it. We'll approve it next week if you call a special meeting. But until it goes through the process, I'm not involved in, in passing this. I'm not voting yes on this, as long as it has not gone through the process.
Okay, so when is your next meeting, Donna?
Tuesday.
Okay, so we'll pass it back if that's what you want to do, but if it, you know, how many times are we gonna bring this thing forward?
And you, Madam President, you can call a special meeting for Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday morning, we'd be happy to accommodate that.
Well, we'll look at the calendar and see how that might happen.
Yeah, we're sending back the redline one, not the one that's been wordsmithed. And that one just needs to be, it's already been approved, they can prove it, just don't give us the wordsmith one, because that wasn't approved by committee.
I will present the wordsmith to the committee for approval.
Well, they can tweak it, they can write it at that time if they don't like it, they can go back to the other issue. It's pretty difficult to have nine people, nine or 10 people writing and wordsmithing. That's not very efficient. Okay, let's move on to the next item. Okay, this one deals with L3, and Tim, you want to give us some background on this one?
Yes, L3 was last revised in 2008. And the name of this policy is the Effective Utilization of Legal Services. Legal services are an important resource for the board and the general manager to have. The availability of this resource also brings the responsibility to use it judiciously and conservatively. This policy rewrites, tries to balance legitimate, reasonable inquiries with the limited access that is appropriate for confidential privileged information, in compliance with Title 33, Section 1805. This policy deals with the request for new services, the documentation, the documentation of legal services, and the review of past advice. The board president, the general manager, and the board directors may all request advice from the association attorney. Board directors make the request through the governing board president. The president can approve or deny the director's request. If the president denies the request, the director has recourse to ask for a vote of the entire board. If the board approves the request, it must be honored. If the board sustains the denial, the request is tabled. But again, the director has another recourse. If the facts behind the denied request materially change, the request can be renewed. In the previous version of L3, the request for legal services has a very specific format to make the request factually specific and narrowly drawn. This is done to give the attorney the specific parameters that the request is asking for. A broad request will get a broad answer, a specific narrow request will facilitate a narrow and specific answer. Legal advice by its very nature is privileged and confidential information. As such, the documentation and preservation of this privileged information is critical if the need should ever arise to review past advice. Email is the preferred method of communication with the attorneys, in that it creates a thread of information not only for the association, but also for the attorney. In past, there was a binder with hard copies that was kept in the general manager's office, and could be redacted, so correspondence that applied to resident or employee information could be taken out. Okay, the general manager's office now maintains a confidential file of legal advice, that I'm calling a confidential legal advice reference file, or CLRF. The CLRF must be maintained to its confidentiality and searchable in a manner that appropriate documents can be easily retrieved. In the case that advice is given verbally, the information shall be transcribed into electronic form and promptly preserved in the CLRF. When requests are made for past legal advice, the same procedure should be followed as in Section 2, and that is having the request narrowly drawn and factually specific. This brings about consistency in both types of requests. And the motion is, I move that the governing board approve engross language revisions to Policy L3, Effective Utilization of Legal Services, as redlined. And just as an additional comment, there is, in the director's packet, a clean version so that you can see with this without all the redlines. Thank you.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Donna. Questions from the audience? Okay, and let's go ahead and vote.
Shall I read it again?
Yes.
I move that the governing board approve engross language revisions to Policy L3, Effective Utilization of Legal Services, as redlined.
Okay, Tim, you can start the vote.
Yes.
Sharon?
No.
Yes.
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 Okay, the motion passes, and we will make the change. Okay, next item on the agenda is a discussion item about the C4 tax status. Throughout the time that we have been working on this project, we've, we've gone through a whole year of decision-making and a real journey. A year ago, we had the problems with the CO7s taking in too much money from outside of their membership, and that caused the entire discussion about the IRS and the limit in the O7 category to the 15% of outside membership. That led us to the closing of the Village Store, and the concern about making sure that the money was not going through the clubs, and kind of addressed some of the mass production kinds of issues that we had as well. At that time, there were only three clubs that had O3 status, which is different in terms of, of the amount of money that they can get from outside sources. And we also had a change in recreation activities manager, there was a new person in the position. We began to become educated on IRS club choices and what that might mean, and that was both education for the board as well as for our general manager. And we've probably learned more about the IRS categories of the C4s, 3s, and 7s than anybody ever wants to know about. And that's what led us to making revisions in the RMPs, which you now know is still not totally resolved. We took a look at our neighbors, what was Sun City doing, what was Sun City Grand doing, and found that each of the, each of us are set up differently. In our initial stages, we're in different, different setups. In June, the board, we had a board director who unilaterally promoted a system like Sun City Grand, where clubs are part of the O4 umbrella, and that contributed eventually to a recall election. At that time, the general manager was charged with resolving the issue operationally. Most of our clubs did not have the issue, they're about 80% or, or more, that were doing just fine the way they were. But the, some of the other ones needed to take a look at their options. At this time also, PORA was approached to provide a gallery that dealt directly with individual artists rather than going through the clubs. And as you know, that's finally opened and is being, I think, pretty successful. In fact, I think they're having their grand opening this weekend. So, if you haven't checked that out, you should do so. Since this meet, the meetings that have been regularly done with each of the clubs to find out what their status is and help them along the process of what they're, what is best for them, several things have happened. A number of them have applied to have a different category, the O3 category, or C3. Some of them have decided to merge with another club, because their numbers are dwindling, and others, one has gone to a nonprofit status, and so there have been different ways to resolve the issues with the clubs. The above concerns also came due to concern about outside people using our facilities. At the time, we were short on space, and in an effort to make sure that our facilities are being used first by, by Sun City West students, or students, going back to my old, my old haunt, in an effort to do that, this is also where the discussion really started out with, with our O3, our status of, our golf status. We, we talked about whether or not they could be part of the O4 umbrella, and like bowling and golf, and discovered that there might be some problems with that. So, right now, our clubs seem to be settled into what they've requested, and are waiting for a report back from the IRS to see if O3 is going to work for them. And they've made their choices, but several of our directors are still questioning whether or not there is a better option for, for our clubs and the clubs that, not all of clubs necessarily, but some of the clubs that still have issues. So, we've been tossing around this concern about, is there another way that we can put them under the O4? The last legal advice that we received does not support making that kind of a change. This kind of conversion might, might be a little difficult to have happen. So, anyway, that brings us to today, and having a discussion about where we, what the issues are and what the concerns might be. My question is, to the directors in making their comments, is, what would this achieve for a club? Why would this be helpful for them? Why would this be helpful for them? And to start our discussion in that manner. Okay, so who wants to speak first?
Can I clarify something?
You have to wait until after the board discusses, and then we'll ask for audience input. Gary?
Madam President, the first comment is, I read the letter from Noveldorf, and I think he was giving facts that have not been presented with our C four questions. In that, he stated all C sevens would convert to C four. That has never been stated. It is only the clubs that have a problem with taxable issues being converted to C four, which is, as you have stated, is very few clubs, 70 to 80 of the clubs. This is not an issue.
Right.
It's only an issue with certain clubs. An example that I can give, which is what you requested, in the note you sent me, you asked me what the tax rate would be, and it is 21% is the tax rate of these clubs. And one of the issues is, is the letter we got back on forgiveness of indebtedness did not state any facts. What my research has shown, and what my previous history has shown, is they look at the substance versus the form of the transaction. What was stated in that letter, that there was never any note signed, but if the substance of the transaction is that they've been making payments on the note, they've been reducing the note, they've been treating it as a note, then it is, the form makes no difference. The substance is it was a note. Now, if we take those two, three, four clubs that have loans from Sun City West, the C four, and if you made them a subsidiary of Sun City West, the C four, they would come under the umbrella of the C four, and then, yes, they would still have the forgiveness of indebtedness, but Sun City West would have the loss, the two would offset, and there would not be a taxable transaction. So it would definitely benefit those clubs by being a part. And on January 31st, I sent you a letter, or January 3rd, asking for some of these questions. I read Mr. Hazelwood's letter that he had provided on June 23rd, and his comments in that letter says that would be, "Board has the power under 4.18 oversight of administrative and operations, 4.18.2." And his comment was, is he didn't think that would be a problem with the letter I read, the legal advice. And so I think there is, and that was what we got in our conference with Noveldorf when I asked him that specific question. His reply was, "No, I don't think it'd be a problem to bring a few of these clubs in as a subsidiary." And that's where my issue is.
Okay, so you're talking about the three clubs that had a loan or a pledge with us. So for those clubs that had that pledge, that would be helpful to them because it would really from tax?
The fear of having the forgiveness of indebtedness attached to them would go away.
All right, but we do have attorney comment that that's not, it's not to be of concern. James Hazelwood, you want to refer to that? We're really not talking about loan forgiveness right now.
But that's one of the issues.
That would be, okay, so that would be one of the benefits you're indicating for those particular clubs.
Madam Chair, obviously, it's important when we're talking about opinions, legal opinions, as with L three and everything, the facts and the specifics are important. So now, you're talking about something that was from June of last year, and I, you know, I don't remember what the exact question was at the time. This has morphed a lot over time, and not, you know, John Noveldorf is also being involved. So I do know that group exemptions are not being permitted right now, so that is true. So, you know, I'm not prepared to, you know, to say whether you can take one club or two clubs or three clubs and make them subsidiaries today, because I don't even know if that was the exact question back then. So, and opinions are just that, they're opinions, which really shouldn't discuss in open session anyway, so.
If my letter had been forwarded to you as I requested, you would have had those questions.
Ah, okay. Well, you know, this is, this is, this is.
I'm not blaming you.
No, this is, there have been a lot of things over, there have been a lot of things over the last two years, basically, about all of this club, these club issues, and it's, you know, it's complicated, and.
Very.
So I don't, you know.
Can I ask you my question?
Ann has a question first.
I just wanted to comment that I was in a meeting, telephone conference this fall, I do not have the exact date, with Mr. Noveldorf and Cliff Smart, Pete Finelli, Terry West, perhaps Bill Schwinn, I don't remember, were in this meeting. And I did not take notes of it because it was a attorney meeting, but we were talking about what we were at that time calling loan forgiveness. And he was very explicit that because there were no notes signed, that there was no retribution if the money was not repaid, that it should be called a pledge instead of a loan. And that is where we have proceeded with it. We have taken away the ability for these clubs to make the money that they would have given to the rec centers by virtue of the IRS rules. But Noveldorf was very explicit that we, there was no way that we would go, we could go after these clubs, nor could the loan forgiveness be considered income to them.
I do remember that issue, and that makes sense. So I am not sure that loans should be the driving factor about whether you bring in certain clubs, you know, or try to, under the 501(c)(4) umbrella, you know, but, because, yeah, I thought that issue was already resolved, the loan issue, but, you know, so.
Okay, Jim?
Thank you, James. In my opinion, what we're looking at here, what would be helpful is a club that has outside folks coming into our community and participating as part of that club. Example would be dance clubs, would be the theater group, would be Kiva Bridge. And Kiva Bridge was probably the impetus for this whole process that we're dealing with right now. And it got handled, and it's over there, but it's still, that would have been an obvious one to come under the C four because they're like golf and bowling in that they bring outside dollars into our clubs, and they have to be accounted in a different way than a C seven accounts for dollars, because that takes the C seven over the limits that they can have. So that's the advantage for bringing those clubs in. It would not work for the Clay Club or the Woodshop or those clubs that have members that are selling things. That's not the intent at all. It's the intent that the club is bringing money in, ticket sales or however they do it, and has to account for it properly. The C four has the mechanism to account for that. The C seven does not have the mechanism. It's as basic as that, in my, I think, that's how I understand it. And James, you would know.
Well, again, this has gone over months, you know.
Yes.
Your very original, original point was that all of these organizations were separate organizations.
Correct.
They were not under the 501(c)(4). They should all get their own advice and make changes to do whatever they need to do to change into a different entity or, you know, get their own advice. So this is more recent, this idea of coming under, you know, Sun City West. We may have, you know, briefly touched on it last year, but, you know, so I'm not prepared to say whether it's a good idea, not a good idea, whether you can do it, can't do it, you know, or whether the board could.
Well, Mr. Noveldorf did say, just finishing my conversation, my statement is that he, we did talk about this, and he did say that that was something that happens and that it could happen, so I'm not.
No, he's a 501(c)(4) expert, tax expert.
But that involves, that does involve a merger and some loss of club independence. So that, if that's an option, but most of our clubs have made a choice and are proceeding with what they feel is a successful way to handle their situation.
It's a different model, too. I mean, just putting aside tax or legal, like, you know, it changes, you're just adding more things into the rec center's, you know, umbrella, and, you know, what is the impact of that? But anyway, that's not, that's not a legal issue, so. Anything else?
My question would be.
Harry?
Yes, Madam President. My question would be, if they came in under the C four, and that took away all the issues with the IRS, and say there was eight clubs, would that not be a simple solution so the clubs could start going forward and doing what the clubs do, and the whole problem with the IRS disappears?
I don't know if it would be a simple solution administratively or, you know, within the, in the, in the operation of Sun City West. You know, it might be simple for the club, you know, the clubs, I don't know, you know. It might be simple from a tax perspective, I'm not sure, but.
Donna?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to share that when I was involved in the meeting with the attorney, and we had discussion about clubs becoming a 501(c)(4), he made it clear in my mind, for a club to be a 501(c)(4), they must be open to the public. And there was discussion about, well, Grand does that, and they don't have their clubs open to the public. And the discussion evolved into, "We're not going to discuss Grand." The point from the attorney was, "I would not recommend that," and that was good enough for me. Thank you.
Lisa?
Again, when we spoke with Noveldorf on the 31st, the question was not for the clubs to go out themselves and to become a C four on their own, to switch from a C seven to a C four. It was to bring them under the RCSCWC four umbrella. And in, Noveldorf said all it would take was for the board to approve it, and then it would take a change in their bylaws, because I asked the specific question, would they have to allow outside membership? And he said, "No, you just change their bylaws to state no outside membership." We asked that specific question, and it is in the minutes.
Sounds like there's a lot, a lot of things going on here.
Yes.
And I wasn't, I wasn't part of some of it.
Lot of confusion with this whole issue, and, you know, I guess that's why we continue to have these conversations. I did have in my notes, though, that it would open up, there's the potential for opening it up to other people to come in, and that that was a kind of a slippery slope and that it probably isn't a good idea. That's what I gleaned from the conversation. But it might be appropriate for one or two of our clubs, and if they are not able to receive the requests that they've made for change in status, I guess, you know, then we look at another step.
Yeah, I mean, it seemed like there's a fundamental issue of whether you want to bring in more things to call, you know, that the staff and administration has to, has to handle, and how is that done? And if that's something that wants to be done, then you look at, okay, can we do this legally? You know, this is, how do we do this legally? But, you know, it may be possible, I'm not saying it's not.
Although it may not be necessary. In the end, it might not be necessary. Okay, Bill, did you want to talk?
I don't.
Or is there somebody from the audience that wants to come on up?
First time, the person that helped Kiva do this for the last two years, and her first damn knowledge of a lot of legal conversations with an attorney that we engaged. First time that I approached the subject was with Jim Stone, a Monday morning, a president meeting in Georgia. And I asked at the time if we could become Kiva Club, become part of a golf, bowling, C four organization. We did some conversations, made some phone calls, I soon came back and said, "Not an option." I went to Bill, because we had to resolve, yes, policy changes that were taking place at the time. We agreed that we would rent stays from the rec centers, and that would solve that part, but the IRS issue still resolved, it was unresolved because we were making about 60% of the revenue from outside sources. So we engaged an attorney, went through lots of conversations, many different options. We looked at a C two, we looked at a C four. We are not a charitable organization, so it's free to us. We are not a community benefit organization, so the C four was out of place. You also go to the last paragraph in Regulation 557, it says, paraphrasing, "If the primary purpose of your organization is that of social nature, you must not file as a C four. You must prefer a section C seven." So you discount that possibility. Take you back to April or May of last year, I, there were, there were made a new caution to leave you to consider putting Kiva underneath the golf, bowling umbrella again. I gave you eight different comparisons between Kiva and bowling and golf, one of which I'll remind you of by the eye of memory. I talked about how difficult the task of those sitting at the bridge table for four hours, just like sitting in a golf cart for four hours, you remember? Got the same kind of response then. So the point being, those options weren't available to us. And my hope at that meeting was, someone had told me that the board had the opportunity to make that decision, put us underneath the umbrella. And I guess I would say to you that, if you think about trying to compare the organizations today, and some of this is a little bit out there, but if you're going to compare how Kiva would operate, this is an example, versus golf and bowling, Kiva would have Sun City West employees checking people in. They'd have the money calculated, all forms submitted to the rec centers. The information would be submitted, it would be filed as part of the rec centers. Hombres, some maybe additional people needed in the finance area. But at the same time, I will say to you that we would benefit tremendously as a club if we were back underneath the umbrella, with a $15,000 a year at minimum, maybe up to $20,000 between the rent, what we wind up paying in insurance, what we wind up paying, there's about $15,000, there's an amusement tax, believe it or not, that we pay the state 4%, 7% actually, throughout the course of the year. Every time someone plays, whatever they pay, 7% of that goes back to the state. So between the three, there's about $15,000. And we would benefit greatly by not having to pay that. So I support doing that. I'm not sure what the legal implications are, but I'm happy that you're willing to pursue that as a possibility again, and I'm sure the club would appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next speaker. Two minutes. I know that was a little over, but I wanted Gary to finish. Want to give your name and your rec card number? Oh, we're getting new batteries.
Thank you. My name is Gloria Freed, 118414. I would like to clarify something. You're having a discussion right now, and, Madam President, when you started, you mentioned the 15% limit. you mentioned the 15% limit, limitation on income. On October 14th, my husband sent you an email with copies of the IRS reg. And on November 1st, you replied to him. And you did agree in that reply that clubs of 501(c)(7) must derive 65% of income from members and only 35%. So the limit only of 15% only exists, further, it's in your email to my husband, when you're providing facilities or services to the public. That's in there, for example, if you're the Elks Club, you own your building and you're, and you're hosting a wedding reception for someone. You're providing the facility, the food, the service. Then you're limited to 15% of income. So for our clubs, and, and if this discussion is going on about 15%, you're eliminating 20% of legal income that the clubs are allowed to make. So I think that you need to clarify, uh, the information that you did send it on November 1st.
Okay, um, Bill, do you want to address that?
Sure.
Okay.
I haven't said the word.
Well, could I?
Oh, come on. April 15th is coming, man. All right. Good morning and thank you. And yes, it's confusing. And there is.
It's not confusing.
Well, apparently it is. Because we have a situ, we have a situation where, you know, when you are a 501(c)(7) organization, right, you are, you are restricted as a social group as to where your revenues come from. That's what the IRS is mainly concerned with, revenue. How you spend your money, not so much.
No, absolutely.
So on that 35%, whether it's the Elks Club, whether it's any kind of, uh, social club out there, right? The 35% is, is revenues generated outside of membership dues. So if you are a membership organization, hold on, I get my two minutes. Um, we've got, we've got a situation where clubs, social clubs, right, by rule and by setup, they are supposed to be operating by membership dues. Okay? When you, when certain clubs sell advertising, that's outside revenue, right? And some clubs bring in a lot more money in advertising than they do in membership dues. That's problematic when it comes to tax compliance. And so some people, some clubs have a vast amount of money in a bank, not primarily the social clubs here within Sun City West, but worldwide, 501(c)(7)'s have monies of investment. So interest gained on those investments qualify as non-membership revenues, right? That falls into that 35% rule. But 15% of that 35% cannot come from outside sources, not investments, those types of things are built into that 20% scenario. But the 15% rule is generated from outside resources. So if you're selling pottery, if you're selling advertising, if you're selling a tournament dues, if you're coming in and playing in a softball tournament or a tennis tournament or a pickleball tournament, outside members coming in here paying a hundred bucks to play in your tournament adds up. And over time, if you're doing fundraising, after fundraiser after fundraiser, you are well over the percentages allowable that are coming in way over what you're collecting on membership dues. And that's where the confusion comes in.
Okay. First of all, it's revenue. It's not just dues. So for example, if a club is going to hold a Christmas party and they ask their members to each chip in $20 for the Christmas party, that revenue counts.
Those are member dues and those are member, member funds.
You're calling it dues, but it's member, it's income from members.
But if you invite the city of Casta Grant to come up for your Christmas party, that's a problem. Membership dues are membership dues. If you want to tip the hat around for your members to contribute to a tournament open to members or a Christmas party for members, that's completely legitimate because our members paying those dues. That's not outside money.
You keep calling them dues. The dues are the annual fee when you join the club. It might be $5 a year.
Yes.
But the income that you generate when you say, we're doing a trip to Barleens and it's going to be $55 a person to ride the bus in the show and you collect the $55 per person, that counts as revenue from members to the club.
Correct. Hundred percent correct.
So, and the income, the income must be 65% from members.
Negative.
Well, that's exactly what you sent me, Madam President. You sent this to us on November 1st. It's the letter from, it's the information from the attorney. And the other, the other point I did want to make is that you keep saying the clubs have all made their decisions. Well, the clubs were forced to make decisions based upon options that did not include the, um, possibility of becoming a (c)(4) under the umbrella. When you look at the totality of income that the Recreation Association makes, uh, the income that comes from our $498 per person, I mean, getting 35% of that from outside sources.
That 35% does not equate to (c)(4)'s. That's a (c)(7) rule.
Oh, so there is no rule. And then therefore we could have had a craft fair and a village store.
Okay, all right. Uh, we, your, your comments have been registered and we've tried to explain it. Maybe, um, we need to have another meeting with Bill and he can explain a little bit further about the 15% because it is very confusing that that's outside.
It's 35% as long as you're not renting out facilities that you own and providing that service to the public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Jack Leary, 128260. Um, I understand what Harry is trying to do. He's trying to, you know, help these clubs, uh, basically forgive their debt. But if there's no note, can the rec, Recreation Centers can't enforce the debt, can't collect on it. So it seems to me to be a moot point. So that's my first comment. My second comment is, if we were to bring certain clubs under, as a subsidiary under our (c)(4), would that not then also mean that we'd have to have increased costs and personnel and administrative? We have to hire more people. That would then add cost to our budget and that could turn into a dues increase. So, you know, another reason to look at, is this, is this, it's possible, it may be possible, but is it necessary? So I think that's, uh, something that we have to look at. Um, and I have a question. I, at one point during all of this discussion, I heard that there was a moratorium on bringing (c)(4)'s or merging (c)(4)'s?
Groups.
Just groups. Group conversion. So bringing a club under a (c)(4), would that be a group conversion?
No.
Okay. Um, then, uh, my last question, my last statement is, I am very disappointed in this board in terms of the different attacks that are being made on their colleagues. Um, you know, accusations of who did what on what date seem to be unnecessary in a forum like this. And I'm also disappointed because there seems to be different versions of the truth. There needs to be one version of the truth and the board needs to speak with one voice. And I'm not seeing that. So I want to admonish the board for that.
Thank you. Bill?
Ma'am, thank you. And, uh, just to touch on, just a couple of things. Um, when, uh, if a, if a club would like to become under the umbrella of the (c)(4) parent group of Sun City West, the attorneys are telling us that it requires the club to dissolve and merge with us. So the club then, and therefore, isn't a club anymore. It's an activity that we provide, like golf and the, uh,
Bowling.
Bowling and those types of things. So the clubs are independently seeking their own advice. I'm going to go back to Mr. Bosick and, and with your, um, I don't know how much money you invested in your attorney and your accountants and whatnot, doing your books and getting the advice that led you down the road to become a not-for-profit organization, which, which allows them to then rent our property with the members that are participating in playing bridge and allowing them to invite outside guests in, is kind of similar to you inviting a bunch of folks that you know, rent a picnic roomada in Beardsley Park and invite in your guests, right? That's our program. That's how we do things. We have rental agreements. And however owner members would like to do, whatever they do in a room that they rent is really up to them. And so if a club were to dissolve and merge and fall back underneath the umbrella of us, um, I think Jack's correct in saying that, you know, we'd have to look at where the, where the, um, the bowling and golf revenues go. They come into the coffers of Sun City West. We have managers, be it Pat O'Hara and Barry, that oversee those operations. So this would be an operation of the association, whether it's Kiva Bridge or any other club that wanted to merge here. So that would require a little bit of work on our part, right? Additional financing and accounting and making sure everything's legit. We'd have some HR and payroll that we would have to, um, incorporate. Is it out of the question? No. But that would be something that the board would basically want to decide to do. That would be a board decision. But I think as far as the update today goes, as far as where we are with the (c)(4)'s and, and our clubs, I think we've come a very, very long way in two years. And, and part of the reason that James is here today is I want to personally thank you for everything that you've done for us and the association in the last couple of years. Uh, your introduction to, uh, Mr. Knobelsdorf, who is a nationally known, uh, tax consultant in the world of 501(c)(4)'s is, has done incredible work for us. Um, Riley, I know you were overseeing this when, when kind of Mr. Bosick walked in and dropped the onion on our desk. And, and then we've been peeling this thing back for two years now. Um, Casey, um, hats off to you. You have done a tremendous, tremendous job dealing with what you had to do with 104 clubs at one point that we had. And, and Katie, all the general services and all the research and everything else that you provide us. I mean, I just want to thank the entire list of staff. Mr. Finelli is doing his civic duty day on some jury somewhere. Um, so good for him. Um, and Kathy is, uh, having fun with a dentist. Um, but thanks to all of them. And you all and Donna, um, for a year and a half, I think you've been nose deep into, um, the RMPs and getting everything, trying to coordinate to make sense of all this. It's very complicated. It is. It's been a test. And I think, well, here we are. But I'm happy to announce, though, and I think you all mentioned it, that 90% of these clubs are fine. They're, they're operating every day, doing what they're supposed to be doing. They're not here filling this room. They're not stormtrooping us anymore. Yeah, it was scary early with the closure of the Village Store, um, untaxable income, um, those kinds of things. We wanted to make sure that the association is in a position of coverage, right? That's our job. And I think we've accomplished that. And I think there are a handful of clubs that are still out there. I'm very, very happy to announce that, um, a couple of clubs have already received, um, um, reclassification with the IRS. So they are no longer 501(c)(7)'s. They become 501(c)(3)'s, charitable organizations doing the right thing. These, these quilts on the wall are, are a, a sample of that. They recently got their new tax, uh, classification status just in time for their quilt show over the weekend. So party on for them. The Pachers, congratulations to them. Um, the, the, the Theater Group is also in the process of getting converted so that they can continue to sell tickets to outside members and help support their organization. And, uh, I think the Western Ares Group, uh, recently converted to a organization similar to what, um, Kiva Bridge did and become a not-for-profit. Somebody saying no? Casey, no? Not yet?
[inaudible].
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Well, thank you for the clarification.
Hillcrest Dance.
Oh, the Hillcrest Dance Group? Yeah. So there are clubs that are taking kind of the advice that they've been taught over the years, talking to their own, uh, attorneys and, and kind of moving this thing forward. Um, light at the end of the tunnel? I think absolutely, right? I think we're in a good spot here today and it's been tough. Um, he's absolutely right. Uh, you know, there, there's, has there been some challenges? Absolutely. But that's how resolution comes about, right? You can't be sitting in a room all the time with everybody saying yes and accomplish anything, right? You need that diversity. You need to make those tests. And, and just moving forward, I think we're doing the right thing. And again, if the governing board would like to pursue bringing some clubs underneath the umbrella of the 501(c)(4) organization that we are, we can certainly entertain that. And again, does it make sense and is it legal? Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, one last comment from the audience. Oh, wait, we got somebody here. Oh, Sharon, okay. Go ahead.
Uh, when I first started doing this with the 501(c)(4) and asking the questions about it, one of the questions that came up was the finances. And the clubs that we're trying to bring under the 501(c)(4), I want to make sure that it's corrected, they don't become 501(c)(4)'s. They are underneath the umbrella of our 501(c)(4). To that extent, these clubs should be the ones that are making money, which means if they're making money, they should be able to pay the rec center for what it is that they're providing. So if it's selling tickets for Theater West, then you would have a, whatever it costs you to sell the tickets, whatever it is that the works doing for HR for hiring the people. That's what was suggested in originally. It was never all the clubs. It was only the ones that were looking at that, like softball, like Theater West, like Western Ares, people that have outside people come and that also make money. So I'd like to suggest that we do pursue this and not just say to the rest of the clubs, too bad, you can't do this. You have to either be a seven or a three. Because I think that there is another option.
Okay, thank you. Uh, one last comment from the audience.
Hi, my name's Bill Smith, uh, serial number 129746. This is my, excuse me, my first, uh, meeting. Uh, my wife and I have lived here not quite five years. We're not a member of any club. Uh, we're not all that participative in the community organizations except for our own HOA. Uh, but we do pay our $497 every year. And, and we like to feel that we're well governed by a well organized group and that things get done. And, and from what I've, I've heard here and what I've been reading in The Independent for the last, what, two years, I think, um, I'm not sure that's the case. And, and I was going to say that when I got up here and then I heard Bill talking about how well things are going and how most things are resolved. And I'm, and I'm, I'm just more confused after that. Uh, the, and, and Madam President, you, you had said that this was a very complicated, complex issue. And, and boy, is it ever. I mean, that's obvious. But we've got a, a group here with a lot of experience, a lot of talent, and you ought to be able to dive in and get this done. And, and so I'm, I'm wondering a couple of things. Uh, one, it's been, at least to one extent or another, uh, been being addressed for two years. Is there a, is there a due date? Is there a plan when you're going to have this resolved? And then the other thing is, is there a process that you're involved in? Is there a committee? Or is it, or is it all of these people essentially debating or talking about this issue time after time after time? And I'm not trying to be negative. I'm just, I'm just trying to bring some, some reality to it here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, answer to your two questions. Um, no, there is no, no, uh, final date. Um, we did hope that we would get things accomplished by January of this year. That was kind of the unspoken thing. And the other, other issue is, it is a process that we have turned it over to, um, this operations side of our organization. So, um, and they've been doing a job working on it. So, um, that is the process. Okay. Um, I think we'll end this discussion. This was just discussion. There is no, uh, vote or action to be taken on this and move on to the next item on the agenda. Um, this should be quick. The Governing Board sets up, um, uh, goals each year. And so this is kind of the report back at each of our, our, uh, time periods, our, our regular meetings. We report back as to the progress on those goals. So, uh, first one is, my paper is correct here. Um, is this with Charter Clubs? The club tax issue?
Yes, Madam President.
And we're at, we're at 90%. We're almost there. We had hoped we could say it bumped up, but Donna, do you have a sentence?
I think it's obvious. We are maintaining our 90% at this point.
Okay. All right. Um, the next thing is, uh, the master plan. We're kind of half done. Bill, were you going to comment on that?
I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Director comments.
All right. We'll wait for that. Um, and so he'll give us a review on that. Then, uh, communication. Lisa, you're going to talk about that one?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam President. So-
Thank you, Madam President. So at the January 31st session that we had, you had asked Ann and I to look into the better communication for when we had a missing director or unavailable director. I guess that's a better word, maybe?
In person.
For, that they can't be in person and they want to call in. And, and it's, it appeared that the saucer had not been working properly. And I think that was due more to, I think I spoke with Katie. We've been addressing this. And it looks like we're going to be maybe just unfortunately, maybe out to June, July. Is that right, Katie? At, maybe at the mercy of Cox. And we're going to be working on with Katie, looking at maybe if not Zoom or, I don't know if it's going to be Teams or something else, that we can maybe get a video call in when a director is unavailable, can't be here in person. Katie and I will continue to work on that with Ann. Did you have anything to add, Katie?
Yeah, the issue with the saucer was really on the end user side, I think. I don't think we, the reason we went with the saucer was because if any of you have had problems with Cox here at your own homes, they are building some new infrastructure here. The nodes here at the General RH Johnson side throughout the community, not just us, we've heard Safeway was down the other day as well. Cox has very old infrastructure and the nodes are overwhelmed. And so they are building out a new node and they are going to split it. So that's good news. The bad news is that the putting in the new infrastructure causes a lot of interruptions. And as well, when the node gets overloaded, we all kind of see these blips and interruptions. And so they're building that now. The turnover should be in July. And so our better Cox service should happen in July. So that's the internet. So to overcome that, we did try the telephone solution at those last meetings because that wasn't affected by Cox. But those of you that saw that meeting, the problem with that is when someone drops the line, you get that loud busy signal and that was disruptive. So our suggestion is if you want to have a absent director have access to the meeting, we go back to the internet option. Just know that if we do that, until this Cox issue is fixed, there could be a drop on it. If we do that, we would go use the Zoom solution. I don't suggest video. We would just use the audio portion of the Zoom. Again, our suggestion is not to have this as an option. Directors sign up to be here. If they're not here, you know, they can always watch it on YouTube. But if this is something you absolutely want to have, that would be our solution is audio through Zoom. And we would provide that through these guys, not through that telephone system that we had up front last time.
Okay, so we remain at 95%?
Yeah, we'll remain at 95% till we work this out. Thanks.
Okay. Policies. Tim?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. With the passage of L3 today, that completes the review of the CL&amp;M policies. So we can move that to 100%.
Great. That makes us feel good. Okay, yeah, you go Richard. Sharon?
In response to the L3 that you did, since we're not allowed to talk about what I reviewed, the calls that are supposed to be having a synopsis done are not there. So in some format, if it's getting it from Mr. Hazelwood's office, there is no synopsis on a number of calls, not just one or two. So is there a way for you to have either Kathy or Mr. Hazelwood's office at least put that information on our records? Because if you, you've destroyed the copies that were paper, so there's no way for anyone to go back, but it just says calls and it says 2 o'clock and then there's nothing. So is there a way for us to have that information back here at the rec centers?
Well, there, there were no paper copies that were destroyed. The binder was taken out of service.
I'm sorry, it was?
It was shredded. It's not like it's sitting around somewhere.
What shredded?
The binder.
That's what I'm saying. It was taken out of service.
Okay.
I mean, if it's not there, it's out of service, right? I have talked with Kathy about that and she says it is her practice to, if she has a phone conversation, to transcribe it and then put it into the database. But I do think this is a, a good clarions call for all of us that have, that do get verbal information, is to transcribe it into an email that gets sent and then that can be put into the searchable database. So, General Manager, we need to add that to your list of things to tell your folks.
Okay, brings us up to date on our current age. Okay, at this point, I think we're at the end of the agenda. Are there a board on Director Comments? Oh, Master Plan Update, sorry. Well, that's Director, that's Comments, so.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'm happy to announce that hopefully by the end of the week today, which was their deadline, an executive summary will be provided by Epic Strategies, who we've been working with as far as our, our Master Plan Update goes. They've been working diligently on a lot of research when it comes to comparable communities similar to ours. A, a, a nice survey that was done, I think we had over 5,000 respondents locally here, owner members. So that's great data coming. And they've done independent research on Gen Xers. So the next wave potentially of people coming or wanting to move into Sun City West, what are they anticipating? And what are the, some of the things that they are, you know, wanting to have in a, in a retirement community as we look forward 10 years, planning on what we've, what we've got now? How do we continue to maintain the amenities that we have? And how do we keep ourselves fresh and vibrant? So I think that is a very positive scenario. Ms. Mace will be back in town on March 11th at the next workshop for the governing board. And that Master Plan Update, kind of Phase 1, shall we say, will be presented at that time, open to the public. And that is at the Social Hall, 9:00 AM on March 11. So that's kind of... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It, it got moved to Palm Ridge. Hopefully, we get a, a nice crowd for that. So I'll be reporting at that time as well, as far as any and all updates relative to the Plan 5 when it comes to the Arizona Department of Water Resources and how our groundwater laws will be changing beginning in the year 2025 and how that affects our golf courses and how we go about irrigating them. But on the good news of that, everything that I've read thus far in Plan 5, we are sitting in, in a very, very good spot. So good for us. So again, that update will all be presented on, on March 11. And we'll be taking the next couple of weeks to make sure that the presentation being presented is all cleaned up, buttoned up and ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Director, Director Comments? Roberta, nothing? Lisa? Harry? Ann? Jim?
No comment.
Sharon?
Just two. One is, in the paper this morning, there'll, there'll be an article about the recycle and transfer center. It was voted on by the county. So it does require, it does, it's going in and out by the electric station on the other side of the 303. And the only reason I bring it up to Sun City West is because you will have an opportunity to use that recycle center for free. They have, I'm assuming somewhere we would get information about that. I don't know if it goes to Pora or not, but I do know that there's a, a way for us to do the transfer station. It was listed in the paper as one of the offerings that the company was making specifically to Sun City West in Cortobello. And then the other one is that on the water bill, is there a possibility, since Pora has presentations being made about the water and how to conserve as a community, that we have some of that information out in our news so that there are specific ways that individuals can, can do that? Is there a way to get any of that information for our people here? I know that they only have 10% of the, of the community through their email or, or information and we have a lot more. So I just wondered how we can get that out.
We can certainly help, but the, the report that we're giving, there are two different water delivery systems, right? Where the report we're giving is based on groundwater being drawn from the ground as opposed to what Epcor and how most residents get their potable water delivered to their homes.
Right. But this particular presentation is how we can conserve as individuals inside our community.
Yeah.
That's kind of where I was going with it because it's one of the things we could help with doing in our community.
Absolutely.
Tim?
Yeah, I do have an additional comment. With this 501(c)(4), bringing the 7s under it, all of our discussion has been on the legal side, if it's, if we can do it legally. I would also like to see a cost versus benefit analysis done to see what the financial impact would be, not only to the association, but to the clubs. I mean, these folks have been pretty adamant about, they want it to be just like golf and bowling. Well, when you go to play golf or bowling, you pay a fee to do that. So I, I know Gary said that they would save them $15,000 from rent and all that sort of thing, but there would be a fee attached to that. And my question is, what would that fee be? And what kind of an impact would that have on the club? So I just would like to see that done too, in tandem with the pursuing the legal aspect.
Okay.
So?
Sharon?
Just to, so you understand too, part of what was missing from the original piece of information was the fact that Bridge pays every single time they play. They already do that. And people that are here from the outside also pay, which is where they get money from, as Gary said. So I'm just saying that it, you do need to have a financial analysis on it. But I'm also saying that if we are bringing in money, we should be able to pay for those services. We, we aren't, we're not taking things away from the rec centers. We should be paying for it.
Okay. Any other comments? Comments from the audience? Sharon? Or Sharon? Roberta?
It was in the paper this morning. I brought up at the workshop about the Airbnbs and the legislation that's going through. Well, Airbnb and VRBO did a, had a steady commission and all these cities and municipalities are making over $500 million a year here in Arizona from them. So reading that, I don't think it's going to go very far to restrict, put them back into the control of the cities.
Okay, thank you. That was a report that Roberta gave last time from a conference that she attended. Okay, any other comments? Okay, I think I, you have been reminded about the meeting already, the next workshops, which should be anxiously awaiting the response and the information from the survey, et cetera. So we'll be looking forward to that. And just remember that it's at Palm Ridge instead. And then our next regular meeting will be March 24th. That will be back in the, in the lecture hall. And, you know, keep tuned in case we have a special meeting to finish those RRMPs. Maybe that can still happen. Okay, the meeting is adjourned.